Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Delaware County Council, February 22nd. I know we were set for 10:00 AM, but it is a little after 11:00. The meeting of the commissioners went longer than we had scheduled, so. Anyway, go ahead and call the meeting to order, and if we could stand for the pledge of allegiance, and I'll have Ron get us started.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Scott.
All right, Steve, can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Ballard here.
Ms. Chambers.
Present.
Ms. Lassiter.
Ms. Piper.
Here.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Here.
Mr. Webb.
Here.
Mr. Alexander.
Here.
Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Steve. Again, questions from the public can be directed to the county council email address. You can always contact your councilman throughout the month. Our emails and phone numbers are on the website as well, and then there will be public comment at the end of the meeting. Denise, was the agenda posted and advertised? And I would entertain an approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Approve, second.
I think I got a motion from Piper and a second from.
Ron or Ballard, it doesn't matter.
Okay, let's go Quaken Bush on that one. And a roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes. Thank you. Appointments, we have a resignation of Bill Hughes as our attorney that sits with us. Again, just a reminder, we employ the firm Beasley-Gilgusson by contract, and we will, I guess, accept the resignation and also amend the, you guys give me the authority to amend the updated contract to include Ben Freeman. I'd like to introduce Ben, and do you have anything you want to say about yourself or anything?
Partner at Beasley-Gilgusson worked with Bill Hughes for about seven years, so familiar with him and his work, and shouldn't miss a step, I hope. If we do, you let me know.
Okay, all right.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ben, does that take care of all of what we needed to get take care of as far as that changeover in the appointment?
Yep.
Okay.
Just let me fill that out later.
All right, and I would need an approval of the January meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ballard, or motion from Ballard, second from Piper. Any questions, corrections, discussion from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
All right, Donna, where are you? There you are.
There I am.
Okay, if you want to go ahead with the transfers.
Circuit Court, 127 probation officer, minus 7,000, 441 office equipment, plus 7,000, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Any questions from council?
Thank you. Yeah, 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 thank you, I don't.
Yes.
This is a upgrade to our security system out of the Justice Center. We are, you have a quote in front of you. The first page is part of the upgrade, the second page is the bulk of the upgrade. So, we asked for the commissioners to help us with this, but I couldn't get a second commissioner to approve it. I have 28,000 sitting in the 127 line item, so I just thought I could take it out of that. I've asked other departments that are getting this upgrade to pitch in. So the third page of the quote is what you see, the $1,500. That can be used out of incentive funds. They can do a portion because that has to be used for anything connected to 40. So 40 court, family support, and the clerk can do a percentage of the quote. So it'll be about a $1,500, I guess, put in towards the main quote. Each department would then, on the second page, you'll see buttons. Those buttons are 125 per button. So depending on what department, how many buttons they want, they'll pay for their own buttons. I did not include that in my bulk quote. However, I have to have 17 buttons for the court, so I have to pay for those buttons. So I'm asking for the 7,000 as a rough estimate of what I'll have to cover, including my buttons. And then when we get them in there, they may have to put in extra repeater, or maybe they can use some of the old equipment. What's happened is it was a digit, or an analog panic button equipment, and we have to upgrade it to digital. So there'll be some equipment we can turn in, some equipment we can use, but most of it's going to have to be upgraded.
Any questions from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Thank you.
A113 deputy clerk, minus 24,70268. B113 deputy clerk, plus 24,70268, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. And Rick was unable to get out here today, but he did send me a text message and just to let you know that this is just a changeover. This person had resigned because of health reasons, and he's replacing that person. Any questions from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
EMS F109, minus 39,715. G109, plus 39,715. D118, minus 38,75514. E118, plus 38,75514, total request zero.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion from Quaken Bush, second from Piper. Questions from council?
Just to clarify for the public, this is basically the same situation as the previous vote. You have some employees now that are being replaced, correct?
Right, making continued office manager Delaware County MS. That's right. It's just two positions that we have, and we're just moving them to a different line.
Thank you.
It was approved by the Finance Committee.
Yeah, we're okay. Yep, thank you. Sorry, we're there.
We're good.
Okay, we got a motion, a second. Any more questions from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Jail, 195 part-time, minus $6,450. F159 commissary clerk, plus $6,450. B133, minus $31,726. C133, minus $31,726. On the next two lines, I have a correction. B121 should now say minus $31,15882. C121 didn't read, plus $31,15882. F134, minus $36,492. G134, plus $36,492. B133, minus $33,41636. C133, plus $33,41636. E159, minus $25,426. F159, plus $25,426, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Questions from council? Just so you guys know, Sheriff Skinner and Nancy called me a few weeks ago and talked about the increase in the commissary clerk position. Right now, for somebody in the jail to transfer that position, it would be a pretty significant pay cut, and this is for that commissary clerk. This would increase it to the same pay as a jail, somebody from the jail.
Correct, the base pay for corrections officer.
Base pay for corrections officer there, and I'll let you go ahead and tell them the benefit or advantage to that as far as personnel goes, if you would.
So the person that does the commissary clerk position, we filled that position less than a year ago, but that person has since tested for a department and been hired as a merit deputy. The commissary clerk position literally handles tens of thousands of dollars in cash every week, so they have to be obviously trustworthy, they have to be good with numbers. The person that did that job came over from a management job in fast food. He was perfectly suited for it, but like I said, he's been hired as a merit deputy since then, this last month. So, we put out the notice that we had a job opening. We had one person respond, and they weren't even close to qualified for it, but we had several corrections officers that said, if you are able to move the pay for the commissary clerk up to the base pay of corrections officer, we would be interested in doing this. So the corrections officers, they already helped pass commissary, some of them. They know the job, they've been through the training, so it made sense to us to see if we could bump that pay for commissary clerk to the CO starting pay, and what we've done, you see on the part-time line, is Nancy thinks that we can reduce the part-time by 6,400 to make it a push, and then this year, when we go to budget, we'll just permanently reduce that part-time, so it's always a push. So that's what we're asking for. And like I said, we have several people in mind already that want the job, so long as they don't have to take a pay cut to do it.
Sheriff, you might explain, since we have a nice crowd here today, what commissary clerk is about.
So every jail and every prison, the inmates are allowed to purchase commissaries, candy bars, t-shirts, deodorant, and that's what commissary is. Envelopes to write their loved ones or friends, pencils, anything that they can buy, that's commissary. We have one person in charge that handles all of those accounts for every single inmate. We've got about 400 inmates in our jail this morning, so that's one person's job. If their friends or family come into the foyer at the new jail, there's a kiosk machine where they can put money in it, so they put money on the books of their friends or their loved ones. That's the cash that I'm talking about, that the commissary clerk has to handle. So one person does all of those jobs related to commissary for our inmates.
Does this have anything to do with the telecommunications stuff as far as the videos and they, or is that outside of that?
So, when an inmate makes telephone calls or video calls from the jail, that money comes out of their commissary account, yeah. The technology is a separate company than the company that provides our potato chips and snicker bars, but the money does all come out of one account, so the commissary clerk also deals with that money.
Sheriff Skinner, as you're aware, I've made no secret of the fact that I'd like to see most, if not all, of our county employees over the $30,000 salary limit. I want to thank you for going to bat for your people and to getting this commissary clerk above that threshold, and even if it's one position at a time, I'm pleased to see that we're moving in that direction. Now, I'm assuming, you said we're going to adjust the part-time at budget time. This is a permanent increase, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, what's the current base pay on the commissary clerk? I told you I wasn't going to ask hard questions since Nancy wasn't here, but.
Six, right about 30 grand. Right, in the high 29s or in the low 30s, it's right around $30,000.
Okay.
That's why we only had one person apply for it.
I think if my memory is correct, it was around 29.9, somewhere around there.
Something like that, yeah.
I can tell you.
Any more questions from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do now detention alternative initiative, 202 food items, I've got a change. The amount is $1,117.75. 335 would now be plus, or would now be minus 1,117.75, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Questions from council?
To give the council update, Jeff Hanser, Chief Probation Officer. We hosted a regional training in January. It was put on by the Indiana State Police Gang Intelligence Unit. We had about 120 folks from the East Central Indiana region, law enforcement, prosecutor, probation, come in and get an update on gang activity in the region, and let us know what's going on. So, it was lunch and learn, so we utilized our grant funds for that, and so that's what we're doing today.
Thank you.
Any more questions from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Sheriff D116, minus $51,544.66. E116, plus $51,544.66, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb. Questions from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Jail, C107, minus $30,877.84. D107, plus $30,877.84, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, where'd the second come?
Mr. Ballard.
Ballard. Second from Ballard. Questions from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Transfer addendum, B, or Communication Center, B134, minus $31,121. C134, plus $31,121. C115, minus $31,121. D115, plus $31,121. C130, minus $31,121. D130, plus $37,121. E125, minus $31,121. F125, plus $31,121. G109, minus $37,121. H109, plus $37,121, total request zero.
I bet you can't say that again real fast, can you?
Say ditto.
Entertain a motion to approve.
Approve.
Second.
Motion from Quaken Bush, second from Webb.
Well, you probably heard her call the number.
I thought I heard 30.
They're all 37,121.
Okay, in finance committee meeting, there was some discussion on two of these positions are lateral transfers and would come in at the 100%. You want to talk about that with council real quick?
Yep, so.
You or Pam, either one, or both.
So I, per county policy, I sent something to the auditor and to Pam. I am requesting that two of these positions out of the five that I'm opening up are able to be brought in at 100% because one of the guys has 14 years of experience and the other one has over three years of experience, so I'm not worried about the typical probationary time for both of these people, so.
And there is an ordinance stating that he can do this.
You want to come up to the mic, sorry?
There is an ordinance stating that he can do this.
That's the ordinance that we approved back on lateral transfers?
Yes.
Is that, okay.
Uh-huh. These guys are going to save us money as far as not going through the training and time.
Well, I'll say it like this, just within public safety, I mean, to get a lateral transfer like that and not have to do any training whatsoever, they should come in if they've got that type of experience at 100%. I don't know why we would penalize somebody that's.
Right.
So that's my thought.
Yeah.
Well, I think originally, when we redid the job descriptions, et cetera, that wasn't a consideration, we just didn't think about it, but it was kind of to be fair to the supervisor and to get people trained, and then we did correct or update that, so. And Ryan is our representative from the council on the communications, and I appreciate him doing what he's doing.
They would start at 100%, but their benefits would start in 60 days, just like a normal.
I like the idea of giving their discretion to the department head and being creative, thinking outside the box to seek and retain talented and trained individuals, and maybe this will set the standard moving forward, hopefully.
You want to explain why there's so many openings right now?
So, there were some internal issues in the 911 dispatch center. Some people left, didn't want to stay, and we currently have eight open positions. This is opening up five of them in order for me to hire. We have found two candidates that you now know about that actually are supposed to start on Thursday. We did interviews last Friday. There's four people that are going to move to the second interview phase. The goal is to get the staffing back up because unfortunately, the staff's getting burned out and they're working a lot of overtime, and I'm not going to, I don't feel comfortable speaking to all the issues from the past, but we're trying to move forward now and build a better center with a different culture and try to attract more people, so.
I think last time when we went through job hiring, Mr. Cummings wasn't here, but we did hire him, and then we forced him into overtime to fill these spots, and they just didn't sign up for that.
I think a lot of these had been held open.
Right.
I think for some time, too.
Right, but that's how we were losing them, they just, they weren't willing to do that, so.
Yep, okay.
But I think that 911 is getting back on track and.
You have mandatory overtime in your.
Yeah, before I came in, they lowered the minimum staffing to five from six, and we're trying to move away from that. You know, we've been very fortunate that people are still willing to work overtime, but they're getting burned out, and it's a lot to ask somebody to do 16-hour shifts two or three times a week, which is what was happening, so, you know, we're trying to change that by getting some people in there.
If I could make a point of clarification, just for members of the public, and frankly, really, everybody on the council, recently, the decision was made as far as employee bonuses, and there was a clause in there as far as remaining employed for one year's time. None of these particular employees that you're referencing here were qualified for that. This isn't a situation where they've taken their $5,000 bonus and hit the door, correct?
No.
No.
No, these are open positions that have been open for quite some time, so I have one employee that is in that list for the retention bonus. She is retiring, and I don't feel that she should be penalized because she's been there 30-something years and had planned on retiring in March anyway, so I don't think that should affect her retention bonus, but everybody else, I mean, has been there.
Thank you for clarifying, I just wanted to clarify for everyone.
People that we're hiring in will not get.
I thought that was the case, and I just wanted you to clarify it, thank you.
Director Cummings, I just want to commend you because, you know, you walked into a firestorm within that dispatch, and we all knew it. We've been dealing with it for a while, we knew there were problems, and you came in and have really, I would say, done some good innovative change, so, much needed, you're noticed and appreciated. Thank you.
Yes, you are.
Right on Mr. Webb's comment to the finance committee, we did kind of go through that with each set as far as the $5,000 bonus was concerned on there, on the safety service, and then the lesser amount, as we went through the finance committee meeting, too. That was a question we asked as well, so.
Those are ARP bonuses, right?
Mm-hmm.
They're just for the general public to know, it's.
Okay.
Part of the COVID money from the federal government.
Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Jail, D113, minus $30,877.84. E113, plus $30,877.84, total request zero.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion from Quaken Bush, second from Piper, you got to be quick, don't you?
Yeah.
I guess the kid's going to have a problem with this.
Any questions from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Prosecutor, pretrial diversion, A101, minus $33,834. B101, plus $33,834, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Any questions from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the financial agenda. 40 court, 175 insurance, $565, total request $565.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Emily, do you want to tell us?
Sure. Emily Anderson, Court Administrator. So at budget time, we had put enough money in for health insurance to include the increase, and they ended up taking some out, maybe to cover something else after budget hearings were over. So we are short now $565 in health insurance, and 40 court does not have any extra money in their budget to cover that, so we're asking that to be appropriated back in to health insurance.
Questions from council?
Say that one more time.
So at the budget hearings, I had put in enough money for health insurance with the increase. Something happened after the hearings, because I wasn't part of the hearings, that they decreased that line item by $565, and I don't know if they just thought, oh, they don't need all of that, or whatever, but we had put that increase in there. And when I got the budgets, after the budgets were over, I noticed that they decreased it.
Who's it they?
My assuming auditor.
It'd be me, so, off the top of my head, I can't remember why, I mean, something[1686.41]
something had to be short that we moved them in. Could be.
Yeah, I, I don't.
It probably was to cover the raise.
Something, yeah.
Raises weren't built in and, and this is a reimbursable budget, so it's by itself.
Yeah.
And I probably had to raise Fike and Perf and borrowed it from there too.
Yeah, it was, it was, yeah, and so we assured us and I couldn't do anything about it because it was all already over.
That's, that's probably what we used.
So I need that, they don't have it anywhere else, like their budget's really tight, we only ask for what we use. They may not use all the travel and training, but we don't know, and so if they don't use it, it'll just go back into county general, but that's why I'm asking for it to be appropriated.
Any other questions from council? Roll call please, Steve.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander, sorry, Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Thank you.
EMS, A110 plus $5,000, A128, $5,000, A182, $10,000, B103, $10,000, B112, $10,000, C130, $10,000, B146, $10,000, F144, $10,000, D147, $10,000, and B113, $10,000, total request $90,000.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from, is that Ballard?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And, I don't know, Donna, you want to explain this?
Correct, during budget hearings, it was just a misunderstanding and so we cut these positions and we shouldn't have because they cut the incentive out and in order to get, to bring these positions up by these dollar amounts, they did away with the incentive, but then when we were doing budgets, we also cut that and shouldn't have. So it's basically, again, to clean up budget hearings and we had asked back, I believe in December, for your blessing to start these people with the correct amount, so we wouldn't have to go back and do retroactive. You gave us the blessing to do that, so now we just need to put this money back in these individual payments and make the salaries correct.
No, no, too correct and misunderstanding.
Yeah.
So is that misunderstanding, Mr. Ashley, when you was wanting to get everybody up instead of that, that variable rate that they eventually get up to, you wanted to do it all at once, so they didn't have to wait? Is that what this is about?
Yeah.
That wasn't added into the budget?
No.
We, we didn't change anything from what we did during budget.
Okay, I understand.
Yeah, the discussion during budget time was to take the reduction and, and include the, the increase and, and I think there was a misunderstanding between what we had discussed and what the auditor's office had down officially in there, so I think that's, that's the reason that it happened and, and we honestly probably should have done this last month, I was kind of asking about it. We never, either way, we need to get it corrected.
Right.
For the budget.
But just, but to reiterate and clarify, this is so all of his employees are all making that, that, kind of like what we're talking about, the lateral transfer to keep our, our experienced employees, so he doesn't lose them, he doesn't want to have to wait for them to be a, a progressive pay scale, correct?
The incentive was taken away and, 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 and given to these amounts.
That's what I thought, so, yeah. Thank you.
As soon as Mike saw the, the budget book, I, I know multiple of us council members got phone calls to make sure we, we rectified this and figured out what that misunderstanding was and got it corrected, so.
Appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Roll call please, Steve.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Quaken Bush. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
This is the surveyor's cornerstone perpetuation.
Thanks.
199 longevity, 700, 311 professional services, 30,000, total request 30,700.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard, and this is coming out of the cornerstone perpetuation fund.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
How's everybody doing?
Good. Got anything for us?
Nope.
Okay. Roll call please.
Good to see you.
Thanks for coming.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
COVID-19.
See you next time.
211 supplies, $3,342, 441 equipment, $4,894, total request $8,235.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb, these next few are the grant funds. Or next two, I guess, it, two or three, you had.
Just two.
Just two, okay, the next two are the grant funds.
They're just leftover from last year, they just need to reappropriated.
Any questions from council? Roll call please, Steve.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
EMA, small engine aircraft, 441 equipment, 5,400, total request 5,400.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb. Again, this is a, a grant fund through EMA.
So i- is this the, the drone program?
Correct. Yep. This will be number five.
Just to add another one?
Yes.
Awesome.
Yes.
Awesome.
Absolutely.
Any more questions from council? Roll call please, Steve.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
EMS capital improvement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vehicle repair, transmission replacement, 10,000, total request 10,000.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Want to tell council what this is about?
Yeah, this is for our biggest, it's a 2011 GMC Dooley. It's the only truck we have that will pull some of the bigger trailers, emergency operations center, and we got a transmission problem, so they tell us we're going to have to replace the transmission. It's only got about 30,000 miles on the truck, so I don't know what was up, but we were going with a new transmission, it's got a three-year unlimited warranty, it's about 90, about $9,400 to get fixed, so I'm asking to transfer 10,000 out of our capital improvements account. Because I guarantee you, I'm going to end up paying another three or four if they told me 94, so that would just cover the cost.
Let's take it out and put the new one in.
Yep. Yeah. We never really had much trouble with the truck, so I don't know what, what came up with it, so.
Put it in automatic?
Yep. Diesel, four-wheel drive.
I'm sure there's a lot of wear and tear on that transmission.
Yeah, it pulls a lot of heavy stuff, yeah, so, but it's the only truck we got and we would never be able to replace it now in today's market.
The truck that pulls the Viper team, Viper team trailer? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, that, but really for the, the EOC is so big, that's the only truck we got that'll pull that, so. It gets a lot of work, plows snow, it does a lot of stuff, we've missed it during the snow, so.
Probably part of the problem sets a lot.
We actually got it on a driving program, so, because we had death fluid problems with it because it set too much, so we take it out and drive it, so.
Any more questions from council? Roll call please, Steve.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes. Thank you very much.
442 equipment sprinkler system for Hartland Hall, 27,000, total request 27,000.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Quaken Bush. Donna, you want to tell us real quick, this was.
This is the same, I came back in either October, November and made this request and then we thought we were going to get a pay for it out of the ARP funds, but I, when we started this project, we didn't know there was like 20 things that you had to do to qualify for ARP, so it was too late for us to take pictures and you have to make a progress halfway through, blah, blah. So I lost the appropriation, died at the end of December, and so now I've just come back and answered the same appropriation that I did last year, so I can get this claim paid. We had to put a new sprinkler in the Hartland Hall because Fire Marshal shut us, was going to shut us down if we didn't.
You have to code, huh?
Yeah.
Just to clarify though, I know you said something about the ARP, ARP funds, there was a significant portion allocated for the fairgrounds, you're saying that this couldn't be taken out of that?
Right, because I can't meet the criteria for ARP funds.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council? Roll call please, Steve.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Health department, local health maintenance, 109 clinic operator, 1,000, 110 permit assistant, 1,000, 111 permit assistant, 1,000, 113 director of environmental, 500, total request 3,500.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Quaken Bush. We got notice that Jamie is not going to be able to be here. He was, he was, I guess, late to, and it's a family issue, I mean, it's definitely a good reason why he's not on this, but I think we were looking for some explanations. Can't remember after we talked to him, Ron, can you recall? He came in at the end, Ron or Mary?
It was a state grant, I think, to.
That's right.
Local health maintenance is a state grant.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's, it has to be used for certain purposes and, and they do work for the state. Statistically, I think, because remember, he said they were issuing a $400,000 application for a grant for him to do a lot of the work that the, the state is now doing, the, the state wants the locals to accumulate all this data. I, I would assume maybe it's from some of the issues with COVID, but I, I wasn't really sure we wanted to participate in that 400,000, this, this is kind of like some.
This could be the raises that weren't, weren't applied at budget hearings.
Did he, he talked to us and we saw this, but in, at the finance committee meeting, he wasn't there when they started, but he came in while we were talking about other, other stuff, so. I don't, I don't need that, but, um, thank you.
Just a second.
I'm guessing this is to clarify the, well, no, because there's only one salary in there.
Got it in our backup.
Now, there's only one full salary, so I, I can't, I can't answer that question. I thought maybe it was because, I would say the one is because we couldn't give a $1,000 raise because he didn't request it and I couldn't increase what was, but I can't say for the others.
If I remember correctly, I thought he did request it, this, this looks like amount, the dollar amounts, if I remember right, of what he was requesting for salary increases for him and his staff.
He didn't request any.
Well, here's.
Well, he came in here and stood at podium asking about it.
I'm recalling some of the discussion that we had at finance committee meeting, these were.
I mean, the salary that he, the increase he got, he, like, the 109 went from 32,000 to 35.
Okay, okay, I see, I see, so he did get an increase.
Yes, I don't know what the additional amounts are.
But he says in here in his explanation, increase in budget slash state Department of Health grant CHMS, state increase in grant budget appropriations. So the state must have increased their appropriation from their, in their grant, within the grant they had applied, and he's just using it to recognize these employees that were working with the COVID shots and all that stuff.
Ron, I remember that there were additional responsibilities too that came along with this increase for, for these positions too that he, he went into with us at Finance Committee, so it's up to you guys, like I say, I mean, he's definitely excused for not being here today.
Well, I mean, you guys have been up here a lot longer than I have, but I, my short interactions with him, from what he's brought is what he's definitely needed, he's not someone to put something on there that wouldn't be necessary.
Well, they have plenty of funds right now in that account, so. To cover this, more than enough, so.
Any further discussion from council? Roll call please, Steve.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Reassessment, 181, Board of Appeals, 500, 180 per diem, 500, 315 EXO, 1,595, total request 3,595.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. And I just saw James out in the hallway.
I know he was here.
He did, he did request that he could change his.
Wanting Donna.
You out there?
If he's out there. He did request that he could change his title to assessment instead of reassessment, so he could go first instead of towards the end.
Okay.
He's not, not out there?
No.
Okay, he was at Finance Committee meeting, the Finance Committee was in agreement with him on this.
What, what's the per diem for?
For meeting for the board members.
For their training?
Board members.
For travel, travels for that.
They get a stipend, $500 per meeting. Whatever the stipend is, it's not that much, it's, it's total.
Board.
Yeah.
Or appeals.
Appeal board, yeah.
That's why.
They get so much per meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, like we used to get a little stipend for being on the drainage board and the commissioners were the only ones that could be on the drainage board, so we fixed that and drainage board is no longer the commissioners.
I'm going to have to talk to my boards, they only give me per diem to travel, sit in meetings all the time.
Per diem is a kind of a generic term.
Well, I think there's an awful lot of meetings and include, included in that $500 too, so.
I think it means per day or something.
Right.
Any other questions? Roll call please, Steve.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
All right, motion to approve financial transfers and to amend salary ordinance with like reductions and to amend hiring freeze ordinance 2020-015.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Quaken Bush. Need discussion from council? Roll call please, Steve.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
All right, any department heads or elected officials that wish to speak today? Seeing none, all right, we have other business. And under other business, we've got the legal counsel response.
Oh, there he is.
Oh, there he is.
You're too late, you were too late.
I missed the discussion, I had a phone call and stepped away for a minute, look what happened to me.
Hey, we passed it, you're good.
Thank you.
Thanks, James. All right, other business is the legal counsel response to the solar farm tax abatement and just to let the public know, in the, in the transfer from Bill to Ben, again, staying within the same, same firm, there was work done on this, I think, when, when Bill made his decision to step off and then that passed off rather seamlessly. Ron and myself sat down with, with both of you guys last week or week before, I think it was last week. Yeah, last week, and went through this with them and I thought that it would be best for him to, or for Ben to be able to present this to the council as a whole in a public meeting, so. Here we are, go ahead, Ben.
Okay, in front of each of you, you should have a copy of the memorandum that we've prepared. The purpose of the memorandum is to address the question that I believe was posed at your last meeting on January 25th, specifically whether the council has the authority to rescind resolution 2021-037 confirming designation of an economic development area and approving a tax abatement schedules for Meadow Forge Solar Invenergy LLC. This memo addresses that question in three separate parts, whether the council has such authority, if so, how would that authority be exercised and then what would be the potential consequences of any rescission? Our position is, and it's stated here, there's a general axiom of parliamentary procedure that a deliberative body can change an action previously taken by amending or rescinding such action. Indiana courts have recognized that this principle applies to units of local government, under Indiana's home rule law, units are deemed to have all powers granted by statute and all powers necessary and desirable in, in the conduct, to conduct their affairs, even if not specifically granted by statute. However, if a statute provides a mechanism for a particular action, the unit must follow that procedure. Both Council for Meadow Forge and Council for the Objectors can see that there's no direct Indiana case law on this question, however, there are cases which stand for two key propositions. First, the decision whether or not to grant tax abatement is a matter of purely local legislative discretion. Second, under the Indiana Home Rule Law, unless an act is prohibited, it is allowed. We recognize that the tax abatement law provides at least two means for terminating a previously granted abatement, one is an appeal filed by remonstrators, the other is termination for failure to comply with the statement of benefits upon which the abatement resolution relied. Neither of these is applicable here, but nowhere in the statute are these procedures characterized as the exclusive methods for revoking the grant of an abatement. Our conclusion is that the council has lawful authority to reconsider the adoption of resolution 2021-037 and amend or rescind it. The second question then relates to the process that must be employed if the council chooses to undertake such reconsideration. In order to adopt the confirming resolution, the council was required to publish a notice and hold a public hearing. It was suggested that the publication of notice one time 10 days before the meeting, before the hearing in the Star Press was inadequate to inform interested parties, however, that is what state law requires. We believe that the same procedure must be followed in reconsidering the resolution. We believe that the same procedure must be followed in reconsidering the resolution. We also recommend notifying to both council who appeared in, at the January meeting. As well as the county's director of municipal and economic affairs. We also suggest that the council's tax abatement committee meet regarding this issue prior to any public hearing. Finally, the council should consider possible effects of a rescission of this resolution. We are not aware of any actual reliance placed on the adoption of the resolution in October, which might cause economic loss to the applicant. The project appears to still be in the early planning stages with actual construction not scheduled to begin for nearly three years. It is not clear that any such losses would be recoverable against the county in any event. Of course, the application has the op, the applicant rather, has the option. To abandon the project altogether, but that would be true even if the resolution remains in effect. Finally, there could be the perception that Delaware County has not honored its commitment to this applicant and that in turn might discourage other economic development prospects. Be happy to speak with any of you about our memo and uh, do any. Draft any additional memos or do any additional research that may be requested.
Just for council's uh, benefit, both uh, council from both sides submitted to um, to bill, I believe. Their opinions as well, and those opinions were considered.
Yes.
Uh, okay.
So just for a point of clarification, as far as anything today, nothing could be done until if there, the council was to consider the rescension of the tax abatement. It would have to come after a public hearing that would um, need a ten day notice. Is that correct?
Correct. Meaning you, you could not move and pass a resolution today rescinding the resolution because it would not have been done after a public hearing.
So if we wanted to explore that option. The only step we could take to go down that road would be make a motion to schedule a public hearing and give a ten day notice.
That would be your main option, yes.
Well, and I think the other thing that we would need to do is get this back to the tax abatement committee. Are you saying that we would need to do that prior to?
That would be my recommendation is, is my understanding it went through that procedure originally. So my recommendation would be that you do refer it to your tax abatement committee first. Holding a public hearing on the potential rescission or amendment.
Well, and just to let council know too, I've um, Brad from our, uh, Brad Bookout from our economic redevelopment is here. If you have any um. Questions, I, I think now would be a good time. To ask those regarding any of the Baker Tilly reports or anything. In regard to that, I mean, if you guys have questions and issues with those. And I would, I would, and I believe there's somebody from Baker Tilly here. Is that correct? Okay, somebody from Baker Tilly here to answer any additional questions if you, if you have questions.
I actually do have some questions if attorney for Baker Tilly would come up.
Hi, Jason Simler, partner with Baker Tilly.
Well, I guess it's still morning, couple, couple minutes. Good morning, sir. Um, reason why I wanted to speak with you and I appreciate you coming here today. When this council was first presented with um, this project. And the tax abatement, one of the things that was uh, spoken to us was the benefit to the West Dell school board or school system. And I'm gonna paraphrase, but I believe that somewhere around one point nine, two million dollars was supposedly uh, going to benefit the school board. That definitely uh, had weighed in on my decision as far as to approve. The school board had a hearing, an open meeting, informational meeting that they put on a week or two ago. And Baker Tilly was at that meeting and in, in, did not verify. In fact, it said the opposite, that. It wouldn't be one point nine, it wouldn't be two million. In fact, it would be zero dollars. So. I would like an explanation as to why we were told that it was gonna be two million dollars, which influenced, potentially influenced everyone else's vote. I know it influenced mine. And I guess the, what, what it goes to the heart of is when we're making the decisions up here, we have to have the, the minimum of what we're being told is accurate and the truth. Especially when the information, decisions we make completely impacts people's lives. So I don't think it's that much to ask that the information would be given as accurate. So could you please speak to that?
Sure, and um, I'm not sure you told you the uh, the county would receive or any of the units would receive uh, new money. I, I know it's, Indiana taxes is very confusing. Say the least. Uh, in our analysis, we uh, showed how much property taxes uh, the company would pay, you know, as tax abatement would phase out. Uh, I, I think maybe the number you mentioned was the estimated amount of taxes the company would pay once the tax abatement had rolled off completely. Um, and Indiana, as you know, um, as Delaware County, uh, as in every county in the state, as every taxi unit, whether it's a city, school, library, you're. Restricted on how much property taxes you can collect in a given year. It's based upon your maximum levy and that's dictated by the state. And that changes from year to year, but you really have no control about it. The state tells you how much you, the property taxes you can collect. And it doesn't matter if you have a new investment uh, or more services that you're required to provide, uh, you can't raise another dollar in taxes. Uh, a kind of a simple example of this, kind of keeping it very simple. Let's say the county's budget is a hundred dollars. And you have one taxpayer in your county. They'll pay a hundred dollars to fund your budget. If you have a new taxpayer coming to your county, you're up to two taxpayers, you still can't collect more than a hundred dollars. You're just gonna allocate that budget amongst two taxpayers now. So now you have two taxpayers paying fifty dollars. But again, your budget doesn't change just because you have a, a new uh, development in your county. And it doesn't matter if the solar farm, uh, manufacturing company, or you know, uh, Walmart distribution center. So what happens with this, you know, as we're being uh, discussed, the solar farm company, as they pay more taxes. Uh, into your county, everyone else pays a little bit less. Because again, your budget doesn't change. So I think, you know, what was probably described was they're gonna pay, you know, so many millions of dollars in taxes per year. A portion of their taxes is gonna go to the county, a portion is gonna go to the school. That's correct. The school's not gonna collect any more money. The county's not gonna collect any more money or, or the townships. It's just everyone pays a little bit less. And I think we show that. With their new investment, the tax rate for the county, for that taxing district goes down about twenty cents. And that's why everyone's taxes go down a little bit less. But again, you're not really gonna see any new money except for. Now that we have circuit breaker caps, anytime you see a reduction in. Tax rates, you will see reduction in circuit breaker losses. So you will see a little bit of new money there, but that's not, that's kind of separate than what the numbers you're talking about.
So who, who, well, I guess what I'm getting at, who is responsible for leading us to believe that there is gonna be an increase in the, the money going to the school district?
That I, I, I don't know. Who presented the numbers or how they were presented.
Well, I'll tell you, what's, what's concerning and, and I don't, I don't agree, I guess, I'm not sure where the million nine or two millions coming from, from, from Mr. Webb. I think. As I remember it, it was about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was presented uh, that would be going directly to West Dell schools. That was what we got out of the presentation that we got. That was the same. The same presentation, the same presenter. And I'll tell you, if I hadn't gone out to West Dell myself personally and heard that, I probably wouldn't have believed. What I was hearing, but it was on that, on that topic, it was totally different. In that the West Dell schools was not receiving any new money and there was totally. Contrary to what we believe from the same report from the same presenter, uh, but in, on that point, it was, it was changed. So I've got some concern. From, from the way, and, and again, this is the same report that we saw. Back in, in September, October, whenever that was. Um, and then it was presented to the school board in a different. Presentation concerning that point. We've discussed that a lot, you know, when, when the superintendent of Delcom came into the. Commissioners meeting and reported that there, um, as I remember it, that there would be a loss uh, to West Dell schools. I immediately after that meeting called. Brad Bookout on the phone and said, hey, is it possible that we can be wrong on this? And, and, and I don't know what, what Brad did from there, whether he researched that or not, but, but. That was, that was what I think everybody that's sitting up here, and I'm not gonna speak for the commissioners, but I know I've had some conversations with them. Our belief was. This was gonna be new revenue to the school and that's what we made a decision on. Back then. I don't know because there, you know, again. And I think we've covered that now. There, you know, I don't know what would have happened back at that meeting, whether any, anybody would have voted differently if they just knew it was gonna be tax reduction for. For every property owner in Washington township. If it had been presented that way, maybe the result would have been the same. I don't know. But it wasn't and it was a different, a different presentation. And like I say, if I hadn't have been there to hear it myself, I probably would not have, have believed it. Unless I saw it on video or something like that. I mean, that was. That was my concern with it. Um, you know, I think. We watched the uh, commissioners meeting earlier. Obviously, we're in a um, a time of now where we've got some time to consider and get things right. And, and I can tell. From conversations I've had with council people uh, throughout this time, I mean. We're seriously considering what we need to do with this tax abatement and, and I think you guys are aware of that. Uh, so that's. That's where I'm at with it. Um, it doesn't make any, any sense that the presentation was like it was in our meeting and then it was totally different a few months later, so.
I just don't know how we, how we got to that point, to be quite honest with you. I mean, my thought is, is Baker Tilly, you guys are the numbers people. Um, you, you would know what the max tax levy is. Before you came in and presented the first time to us. So I guess I'm. I'm just confused and that's because of Baker Tilly.
Yeah, I guess I was under the misunderstanding that uh. Again, it wasn't me, uh, that was here at the last meeting, but I didn't know it was someone from our firm that presented these at the last, at the, I know we have a presentation here in August that we. I'm guessing this is the presentation that you heard in September. And I know there's a footnote that talks about, you know, this doesn't mean there's additional revenue. I mean, that's in the, the notes below the schedule, so it depends on how it was presented. But I know that that's, again, we do, you know, we represent the county. Uh, we do this through all of the state. We know that this isn't new revenue for, for the county or for the school. So I, I'm getting not knowing exactly what was said or how it was presented at, at that meeting.
I will say you, your business has always been, you know, held with such regard and when information is presented to us, we take it for what it, it's right before us because you always have been. Such a big help to us for other projects and whatnot. And so I think that's why we're all kind of a little disappointed. This time that it was presented differently when you have been an organization that has been so trustworthy. And not only with our community, but other, like you said, others all over the state. And I think that's why we're all a little, a little frustrated right now.
And actually, I know Matt Eckley, who you've worked with in the past, and it is, it must have been who the person was here. I know when we talked, he was unable to be here today, so he apologized, but, and we talked about this before and. You know, he knew of the misunderstanding and he was the one at the West Dell schools and he was also surprised that uh, after he left that meeting, there was a confusion. Because he also, I think when he left that meeting, you know, he also thought. That everyone understood that there wouldn't be any new revenue uh, generated from the, for the various units.
When he left the West Dell meeting, that was clear. When, when he, when, when we got the presentation as our meeting, it was, it was not. That way because I know, I know everybody up here, I know from talking with Brad, several conversations, even up to the day. And the time of that West Dell school board meeting. We believed that Baker Tilly's um, presentation was, was correct and then to have it be so much different. Uh, out there was, was tough for us, obviously. Brad, do you have anything?
Yes, uh, good afternoon, council. Brad Bookout. Yeah, I, I went back and watched the September and the October uh, council meetings uh, in their entirety. And it was reported at the meeting, the total revenue capture from the company, which was reported to us from Baker Tilly. That was a number. Subsequent to that meeting, then uh, the Baker Tilly document, which was, is this document, which I know you are familiar with. Was shared, was forwarded. Page four of that document shows. Revenue to the different corporations, to the school corporation, to the trustee, to the county, et cetera. And on face value, that page four of this report shows revenue going to all of those. Um, we did rely on that. Every one of us did. The school corporation utilizes Baker Tilly, the county utilizes Baker Tilly, and we thought that to be gospel. Um, we now have new information. Uh, that is not correct. Since that time of receiving that new information, um, I've been mum on this topic. This is something for you to decide how you wish to proceed going forward with the abatement. I will support your decision and uh, I look forward to talking more with Ben and working with him on that.
That's the speed he's talking about right there.
Yes, sir.
So you see what we're talking about then?
Yeah, I, I could, I could definitely see, you know, looking at page four. I mean, it does look like, you know, just looking at the numbers that you would think that. Each, you'd be getting new revenue each year and it hasn't, you know, for the thirty five years. Without not knowing how it was presented and then also kind of looking at the footnote down there where it says it doesn't represent new revenue. I can see how you would just automatically consider that as new, you know, those numbers as new revenue.
Well, and, and there is some benefit. To the, to the, to the tax base out there. There's, there would definitely be some benefit had this project go, but the presentation should have, should have been about that, not about the school. Receiving, receiving money. It should have been out about, about the, the reductions.
Well, and that's where again, not knowing the uh, not giving the presentation, but if you go forward, it does talk about how uh, again, adding assessed value to the tax base. And that's gonna decrease tax rates by about twenty cents. And then there's a slide, I think on page, you know, nine, that because of the reduction in tax rates, you know, all the taxpayers are gonna see a reduction in their annual property taxes. So that's hopefully how it was discussed in that presentation. But again, not, if you're not connecting all the dots, you might think that there's both. A reduction in property taxes and new revenue, but it's really just the reduction in property taxes.
I have a question here.
Twenty cents versus a million dollars. I mean, in your mind, you're saying, oh, everybody gets the tax rate lowered by twenty cents. The school don't get a million dollars. That's, that kind of sways your mind a little.
Yeah, and that, and that twenty cents, that's after the tax abatement wears off. So you're not talking, you know, year one, you're talking after, after ten years as well.
So I've got this screenshot here of, it's um, on social media. It's a sponsored page from Invenergy and. It's a picture of a school, some kids coming out and it says highlighted sixteen point six million dollars allocated to West Dell Community School Corporation. Can you speak to that?
I believe that's, that on page four, that's where that number is coming from. That's the estimated taxes that they had paid over a thirty five year period.
That's the, is, is that broken down by, by year as well? Is it, isn't it six hundred and, I don't have it right in front of me.
For, if you're talking about West Dell school, we're showing five hundred forty three thousand dollars. So of the million dollars in taxes they would pay, this shows that of that amount, five hundred forty three thousand would go to West Dell schools.
So what's the sixteen point six million mean?
That's the amount of property taxes uh. Over a thirty five year period, so over the life of the project.
Going specifically to West Dell?
Yes, but it's not new money. Again, West Dell will be getting sixteen million dollars from this company, but they'll be getting sixteen million dollars from, less from everyone else in the county. Because again, the school's budget won't increase just because.
So, so would, would you, would you agree that this advertising is misleading at best? Sixteen point six million dollars allocated to West Dell School Corporation.
If it's looked as new money, yeah, that's not true.
Appreciate you saying that.
I mean, again, other taxes they're paying sixteen million of is going to the school, but it's not gonna be sixteen million dollars of new revenue that the school receives.
It's accurate, but to the average person scrolling through Facebook, they're, they're on the impression that that's six, sixteen plus million dollars, new money going to the school corporation, right?
There's a lot of those people in this room right now. That's, that's.
And that's why, yeah, uh, wanted to clarify that. The school is not gonna be receiving new revenue. Uh, again. They'll be receiving sixteen million dollars from the company, but they'll be receiving sixteen million dollars less from everyone else in the school district.
It was just sent to me from, it was actually, it was a sponsored post.
Hang on, guys, we gotta. We'll, we'll have public comment coming up, okay? I, I do wanna say that, um, I mean, Baker Tilly is the name um, in, in this kind of thing. We've, we've always trusted Baker Tilly and, and still do. I just think that. In, in this one, to me, it comes down to the presentation. That we received here was, in my opinion, very, very different than, than what happened out at West Dell school. Um, I don't think the numbers changed. I know they didn't. I mean, it was the same report. Same presenter. Uh, but I can tell you, everybody at West Dell that, that attended that meeting got a different opinion of what, what was. Going to happen from that report than we were presented in there. So that, that was our, that was our issue. I appreciate you, um, you coming up and I'm sorry Matt wasn't able to. To make it, but I know you guys' schedules don't. I'm sorry, Matt wasn't able to to make it, but I know you guys' schedules don't always fit into to meetings when they happen, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, I mean, even before Matt, I worked for the county for years, and our firm has worked for the counties for years with Unball and now Baker Tilly, and so we want to. I apologize for any, you know, misunderstanding that there was, and I think you're right, the numbers haven't changed. It was just the the interpretation, the presentation was different. So we wanted to make sure that you had the correct information, because, I mean, that's, as your financial advisor, you count on us. For information to make the qualified decision. So we want to make sure you have the correct information.
Well, and I think those those questions were asked even up to the the Westell. Westell presentation and and. The answer still was, you know, to back to me was that, yes, they're going to be receiving this amount of money. These these figures are correct. So that's that's where I'm at with it.
I guess the learning opportunity is a little extra clarity. And we we're all smart people up here, but sometimes, you know, we're not the tax tax experts that y'all are that we pay for you to be. So a little extra clarity moving forward would be most helpful, not only for us, but anyone else who's looking at, watching our meetings or looking at documents.
One of them, I'd even say, extra clarity, just be clear. I mean. Simple as that. So it just. Because of that, we've got all these people in this room now upset because of a decision that was made where. Our accounting firm wasn't necessarily clear, and, you know, that's a problem.
Well, and ultimately, it comes back on us. I mean, we're the we're the ultimate responsibility for this, and and it and it does. It does affect us, so. Anyway, thank you.
How it affects us. It's a full room.
Yep, thank you.
I would like to say something here, and maybe our attorney can verify this. There's an Indiana statute that requires notification of all. All those in this county for our meetings and our actions, et cetera, et cetera. We no longer have a local newspaper. You can get it online with the Muncie name on it, but it's not local. But statute requires us to advertise in two official locations, right? Not not social media. Social media has nothing to do with what we do in this room.
Correct. Social media, while helpful, would not fulfill your notice requirements for the public meetings.
But that doesn't mean we can't, and I think we've all heard heard the calls, that doesn't mean we can't. Put it out there.
Oh, true.
And and the same thing, I know there's been some discussion just for the the rest of people in the audience. You know, for public hearings. I I think we can, and and if we have any more public hearings, I think I'm going to make that requirement from the council that they be in the evening. You know, we scheduled those those two public hearings. Right before the meeting, and I think we've heard from people that they'd like to, and I think that part of it we can do. The other part. It's tough for us is we've we've normally, as you can see, have a lot of department heads in here that have to, and that means comp time and overtime. If we have those in the evening. So those regular business meetings that you guys. Have set through for for two meetings now. I I don't see much of a change in those two meetings or those meetings, but as far as public hearing goes, I think that is something that we can. We can certainly accommodate. I attended the planning commission. Hearing as well. Those really, a lot of those things don't have a lot to do with what we do here, the tax abatement and and those things, but there were some good points made. Obviously, the commissioners. Earlier today, made a a moratorium for a year on this so that we can study it. They've. They've put together a small study group to to take care of that, and I think that's going to. Going to help this project either, these projects either succeed or not exceed, as well as future projects in Delaware County. So I think we do have some time here that we can we can. Use on our on our end, too, to consider whether. Whether or not, but there is a process for for what we would need to do. We can't just do it right here, right now. So that's where I'm at with it, guys. You.
Well, I would like to ask the legal representation. If if this was referred back to the Tax Abatement Committee. For discussion. Would that require fulfill the legal requirement for, let's say, if if it didn't come before us? Like, I guess what I'm trying to say, we wouldn't have to act immediately upon that, correct? We would still have some time to consider things. It would just get one more step out of the way.
Any future action, and that action being a public hearing and then of an actual vote or resolution, whether or not to rescind or amend. There is no set timeline for that. That would be at your discretion, with the exception of you do have to give 10 days' notice of that public hearing. So you can't just kind of throw that up on a whim. There is some built in time there. But you, there is nothing saying that you have to take that step now versus next month versus any time in the future. The the immediate immediate referral to the the Tax Abatement Committee would just be for their. Study and any future input or recommendations they might give you that might advise you on what you believe your best option would be. In having a public hearing and then any vote that you might cast at that time.
Another question I would have is if a motion was made. And wasn't passed, is there a timeline for how long it would have to wait for that motion to be brought up again?
A motion for.
A motion of this council was made but didn't pass. Is there a certain timeline that has to be? A certain amount of time has to go by before that same motion can be brought up again?
So it. Like, forgive me, having this being my first meeting, a motion was brought, was it seconded?
Let me put it this way. If if I brought a motion to send this to the Tax Abatement Committee for review.
Right.
And it didn't pass the council, would that then handcuff us for one year or a certain amount of time for being able to revisit that motion?
No.
No.
Mr. Counsel.
Mr. President, counsel, it is my recommendation, in light of the circumstances of of the misinformation that's provided, that you do take your legal counsel's advice. And send this back to committee for review, ultimately reschedule another public hearing for abatement.
With that being said, I'd like to make a motion to send us back to the Tax Abatement Committee for review.
Second that.
Motion from Webb and a second from. Mary or Chambers. Sorry, Mary, I call you Mary.
So you have discussion now?
Yeah, discussion from counsel.
So this is we're this is sitting for a year, no matter what.
Yes. Well.
So if we send it back to the Tax Abatement Committee to do what? To review it, again, and then for it to come back here and sit for a year, you know? I mean. I'd almost want to see, honestly, before we really do anything, what the community committee is going to do and and what comes from that. Before we, I think we start moving backwards and then forwards again.
I don't I don't disagree with with what you're saying. It's. There could be some significant changes made in this in this small study group that would affect the scope of the project. Either to the point where it couldn't be completed, or to the point where. It would make our original tax abatement null and void, because it was based on. A total different scope of project than than.
Honestly, we have, so. I don't know. I say we wait. I say that way, the public has enough time to and know when the meeting is and knows knows when they can come and talk and 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 hit us up on this. Because I I just don't know that, to me, it feels like. What is the point of passing something that in my eyes right now is null and void? You know, because of the lack of information. So I I don't know. I'd want to see what comes from the committee itself as to what they put together, and then that can be presented with detail to the the Tax Abatement Committee as well. So I I don't know why we're going to go back and rehash the same paperwork when there's a possibility of people out here changing things down the line.
Well, if I could speak to that, I think that these community members have had this hanging over their head for several months now. I know it's very important to a lot of them. And this is clearly a necessary step that we're going to have to take at some point anyways. For that reason alone, I think we should move forward with it. The second reason I think we should move forward with it is, I don't know about everyone else up here, but I make a lot of my decisions based off of the professional recommendation. Of our Economic Development Director, Mr. Brad Bookout, and Mr. Bookout is suggesting, with his professional recommendation, that we refer this back to the Tax Abatement Committee. For that reason, that is why I made my motion.
You know, one of the things for me that I I still have concerns about is are like the legal ramifications, like, are we going to get sued? What does that look like? Is there a possibility of that? Obviously, for those of us who have been following our budget process and the monies we have available. I don't necessarily want the taxpayer dollars being spent for going to court, if that's what happens when. We have a sheriff who's been asking for salary increases for a while, that we've been able to give him some, but not what he's been asking because of our financial, how tight everything is. I'm sure we have some kind of insurance policy or something that helps with that, but I, that's what makes me nervous, are the financial ramifications.
Well, to be fair, though, they've not even filed for an application ready, so if they've made financial investments before they have an approved application, I don't see how we would be liable for any of that.
You're not the lawyer or the judge.
I'm just a common sense guy.
Doesn't mean a thing in this world.
The second thing I'm concerned about, too, is just the optics of us rescinding on something, especially with the moratorium in place now where we can't really do anything. I don't necessarily want to be the county of no, but obviously, we still have a lot of things to factor in, and I think it's great that we have this extra time. Have a committee together to see what we're looking at, to see if that changes, you know, the plans and the projects. I I don't want to do anything. I feel like this is. Well, I know it's very emotional for everyone here today. I I don't want to be too rash and just kind of rush through something without knowing all the facets of what this can, the impacts are. Right? And everyone has their own, their feelings and thoughts on that, and that's, we're all entitled to that. I just, I want to make sure we're looking at the big picture and not just running purely kind of on a little bit of emotion right here and understanding what we're we're factoring in. So that's that's where I am right now.
And related to my suggestion, it doesn't have to be now. It could be, I mean, there could be a compromise between you all, and it could be down the road.
But to clarify on what Jessica just mentioned, the motion is just to send it back for review for the recommendation. It's not to do anything other than. One of the steps if we decided to do something. I believe. Our legal representation said that all they're going to do is make a recommendation and kick it back to us, so. I don't think that's anything that would be something that couldn't be undone, other than getting a second look from them.
I don't agree with you, Ryan. I I personally agree with Jessica 100%. The commissioners have already agreed to a study committee. Do we need two study committees when one study committee can't really study it till the first one comes up and makes recommendations? The commissioners are the county executive. We're only here for fiscal purposes. If if I was asked to vote to save the taxpayers 20 cents on our tax rate, I would do that in a New York minute. But all the details, as some have said, weren't weren't real pertinent. As an old farmer, I don't want to get the cart before the horse.
I can truly respect your position that two committees would seem like an extra layer, unnecessary layer. But I can promise you that everyone sitting in this room that's here to oppose us today doesn't feel like we have enough layers, and that's what's got us to this point so far.
Well, but I don't know that the the people here. Believe we don't have enough layers. I think some of them probably think we have too darn many. They don't like the decision that was made. The atmosphere in here is is no one's really feeling good about it. And the county commissioner spent hours this morning hearing people's emotions and reasons. It's it's too emotional, I believe. Let it rest. The the year moratorium will give people plenty of time to discuss and cuss.
Well, Ryan, I I I agree that this will go back to the Tax Abatement Committee at some point. I just don't think we're there yet. I I think if we get it back to Tax Abatement Committee now to consider things, the only thing they can do is wait on the the outcome of of the study committee. At this point, so. Well, it'll be there. It'll be there.
Since I see that it's not going to pass, I withdraw my second.
All right, help me out here. We've got a motion, but not a second.
We had a motion and a second and discussion. I would say you either need to call the question or entertain a motion to table. The transfer to the committee.
We could do that. I didn't consider that. We could table it.
Can't we consider and vote to allow her to withdraw her second?
I'd leave that to the discretion of the the board chair.
I'd say, what's wrong with making a vote and laying our cards where we're at?
You already know where your cards are.
I'm leaving that.
Okay.
If you accept her withdrawal for second, then there is no second. The motion dies.
I mean, I agree. I agree. We should send it back to Tax Abatement.
So I guess my point is, if we're, if if everyone's pretty much indicated where they're at with it, then what's what's the reason for wanting to avoid putting it on the record?
No, fine, let's vote on it.
On the record.
I mean, we've said.
He said it's not going to hinder it being brought before it again. You know, if it if it needs to be brought up again.
That was your fellow councilman's decision on her part.
Okay, we've got a. We've got a reconsideration, I guess. Mary, are you still wanting to withdraw your second?
Not really, but it looks like it won't pass anyway, so.
Now, I mean, if you made the second, we'll we'll vote, but if you want your second reconsidered, we need to vote on that.
Okay, second, then.
You're you're going to continue with the second, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Any more discussion from counsel? Any other actions from counsel? Okay, roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
No.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Not at this time.
Mr. Quaken Bush. Mr. Alexander.
No.
Just just to clarify, Ms. Piper, your vote is a no.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
But if it were to come up again with more information and after the committee, and I think there's opportunity for us to bring it back, but yeah, that's correct.
I I think, I mean, we've got representatives of the company. In attendance today. I hope you guys know where we're at on this, and I hope you know this is up for serious consideration. The first complaint was brought to me in December. And and I'm very disappointed. This shouldn't be our issue to deal with. This should be the project owner's issue to be dealing with the project. These people have questions. And the last few times I've seen you guys get up, you've you're asking if there's any questions. Well, there are a lot of questions, and they need answers. I'm hopeful that you're you're going to answer some questions this evening. But. But I'm really disappointed in the in the performance of of where we're at to this point.
May I ask a question of the representatives?
Yep.
Of Invenergy. At our previous council meeting, there was some discussion amongst some of the crowd about. A detailed map with some of the the homes and and things that was in close proximity to the panels. I believe, someone, correct me if I'm remembering this wrong, I believe it was said that we would be provided with that map to see that. I personally have not seen that yet. I'm curious if we are going to get a copy of that, and if that's something that would be shared at your open house this evening.
Thanks, Ryan. Emailed a copy of the map to Scott yesterday. Received it back from the engineers yesterday afternoon and forwarded it right over to Scott, and we will have that at our open house tonight.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that.
Do you like to remind the public about the details of tonight's event?
Sure, sure. Yeah, just kind of reiterating what I said at the Commissioner's meeting tonight from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. At the Cornerstone Art Center in Muncie, we'll have Invenergy representatives there for an open house event. So this is informational. We will have light refreshments and snacks there as well, and then also our our layout. So we'll be happy to answer further questions then. And look forward to hopefully seeing members of the community there tonight. Cornerstone Center for the Arts. It's in their main room is what they call it, and that'll be from 5:00 to 8:00 o'clock tonight.
I think there's been some confusion, too. There are some other solar projects. There's another one happening on the the west side of the northwest part of the county. You have nothing to do with that particular project, so.
Northeast.
Northeast, I'm sorry. Yes, you're this is northwest. I apologize. Northeast, but these are two separate companies, and that is not your project.
That's correct. Yep. We represent the Meadow Forge Project only in Delaware County.
All right, thank you. Anything else from council at this point on Fuller Farm Tax Abatement issue? Okay, all right, let me we've got a March council meeting. I'm going to ask for a motion to change that to March 29th. We had it scheduled for the week before, and I should have caught this when we did the approval earlier in the year. But that's during spring break for most schools, and we've got a lot of department heads and a few council members that may or may wish to be out of town there. So if we move that back one week to March 29th, that clears up most of it. So I would entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
A motion.
Give it to Ryan, I'll second.
Motion from Webb, second from Piper.
Same time, right? 9:00?
Same time, 9:00. Yeah, this will be our only 10:00, well, 11:00 meeting that we have scheduled anyway. So roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Webb.
Yes.
And Alexander.
Yes, Denise, sorry. I didn't realize Steve stepped out. Okay, I've got several people signed up for public comment. We're at public comment right now. I will say this, that the council members watched the commissioners and all of the public comments. So if you've stated a public comment in the commissioners meeting, I would ask that we not repeat that same comment here today. But Andrew Pop, I think, is our first, and we we're going to time him at three minutes.
And I'll start the timer after you say your name and your address. So give me just a second, Andrew.
Yes, ma'am.
I apologize.
Andrew Pop, 4,000 North Piper Street, Muncie, Indiana, 47303. Good morning, guys. As the meeting grew, I apologize, I gained a lot to say, so I'm going to try to speak as quick as I can, but still be inconcise. I wanted to thank the new communications director and Mr. Ballard, the representative for the 911 Board. They're really turning things around down there. I've got some friends that work there that are really happy about some of the changes that are being made and implemented, and I I'm thankful for that because I'm thankful for them. I know they were facing a lot more of that burnout pre V2 than what they are now. So I appreciate that. On this solar project, I came last week or last month, and I said I didn't have a dog in this fight. I've done a lot of research on it. My opinion on that, while still not directly affected, has changed. I think there's a lot of dogs in the fight, and I I think that that matters. I know a 20 cent number property tax cut was brought up. I'm not sure anybody cares about a 20 cent property tax savings when they're going to have to look at solar fields, and it's going to affect their crops and their livelihood. I have I have looked at the project through a a different lens. I understand that this could lead to some solar farm struggles moving forward if Delaware County would be interested in such a project. I am appreciative that that was brought up and made in the consideration. On the point of sending this back to the tax abatement committee, nobody said you guys had to meet tomorrow or next week or next month. You could have waited, in my opinion, on that first study group set by the commissioners to do that. It would have just got the ball there so we didn't have to come back for a meeting after their result and then make the vote that you would have made today to send it there. I I I'm glad to hear in talking with Scott and Ryan and a couple of Ryan, Mr. Webb, sorry, there's there's two of you, that 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 there is motion and consideration on this of how the public has been treated, potentially misled, well, misled. The last thing I'd like to say is I'd like to point out that Mr. Bookout and Baker Tilly on different levels, but a lot on a lot of same projects, they've had a lot of successes, and they've done a lot of great work for the county, and they they often take a shareholder of that accomplishment. This is the first time I can remember where they have made a mistake and have to take a shareholder of the blame. So I know they're taking a lot of heat on this. I hope people don't forget the years of high quality work that they've done with this one unfortunate misstep. So I appreciate it, guys. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew. James Wurmer.
You guys are all looking at me, hey, the circus guy's back. So anyhow.
Name and address.
I want to thank you guys for hearing us today.
Can you give us your name and address?
James Wurmer, 900 West Gaston. But I want to thank you guys for hearing us today. I would like you guys in the future to do a little bit more homework on these projects. You've really kind of let our community down getting getting us wrapped into something that we really, you know, I think the whole county could do better on. You know, select the right sites. There are numerous sites in Muncie that's been abandoned for 60 years that some of these could go on. Don't put it on our farm ground. The other thing is, is it was made aware to me, I don't know if it's true, Mr. Bookout might be able to answer this question, but Westell Schools is the heart and soul of our community. And I heard that you've been out talking to our superintendent, made a little threat to him, and i- if that is the case, did not hear that from the school.
I've never made a threat to your superintendent ever. And if if I've never threatened.
But I heard you made him, I heard you made mention to him that he needed to stay neutral in that. That is the heart and soul of our community.
Stay neutral on any subject at all. So, no, that is not correct.
Okay.
Please, please don't dispel information.
I just I just wanted to open it up right here while everybody's listening.
Let's finish your comment. Let's finish your comment.
So the next thing I have is that lost my place there. Does any of you, do any of you know what the size of this project is? You're saying 3,000 acres. Did you know that 3,000 acres, you can put 600 Meyer stores on 3,000 acres? That's what you guys were proposing for us to have to look at. And, you know, the scope of that project is unimaginable for us. And the last thing I have is, you know, I'm I'm in, I do business every day in the construction business. We do things a lot different. I would have sent these guys packing for simply lying to our community. I would not have put up with that. You know, our people were raised with good values. They they put their Facebook posts out there, whatever they use, they're lying to our community. They're lying to you. And I just, you know, that's unacceptable. So I hope I hope all of you have took a real hard look at at even this company and just send them on down the road. There's other options. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wurmer, I do want to clarify that I've 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 talked to the superintendent out at Westell Schools, and and he confirmed with me that all of the conversations that he've had with elected officials and and Brad have all been very positive. They've they've been an exchange of information and 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 have been have been all very positive. And and I I know Brad well enough to know that that is a rumor. That is not true.
Okay.
Okay?
I I don't come out of my seat very often, so.
We know.
Well, I just want that out in the open because, you know, our our school is our soul of our community. Somebody planted a bullet in our school, and I'm not pretending to community.
Trust me, it's not Brad Bookout.
I appreciate you, Brad, getting an opportunity to to clear clear that up for anyone who may have heard that, so thank you.
Ryan Richards.
Ryan Richards, 10191 West 1200 North Gaston, Indiana, 47342. I just want to say, like I said, bring the attention, say the same things I've said, like as far as what I did last week or last meeting. Somebody that can pay, like I said, three, four, five, sometimes 10, 10 times more than what you can make on an acre of farm ground, doesn't need a tax abatement. They got that kind of money that they can throw around, that they can get people to sign up, get people to do things with money, then they don't they don't need a tax tax break, okay? Like I said, as far as me, I I'd be the same way. I'd I'd say, I'll take the 20 20 cents they're going to save me. I'll pay it if I don't have to look at that the rest of my life, the rest of my kids' lives, and then my grandkids' lives. Just the main reason why I want to fight so much is this is my son's fourth year farming, and I just want to make sure he's able to farm his life. And then down the road, if they have kids that if he decides he wants to, then once again, he'll have that opportunity to. When you take farm ground away from, you know, be farmed, that's taken away from our chance to be able to rent ground, to be able to buy ground. You bring in big corporations to jack prices up on us to be able to buy farm ground. We can't compete with that kind of money. We can hardly compete a lot of times with the money that that there that's farm ground's going for now, let alone trying to compete with big corporations. Thank you.
Thank you. I can't read the, is it is it Joe Smith or is it, I can't?
Joe was here.
There is a Joe Smith.
It is a Joe Smith? Okay. Okay. Brian Glass.
Brian Glass, 7310 West Eaton Wing Pike Gaston. Nothing huge, but just a thank you for the council for hearing us and giving us the opportunity to speak. Really appreciate Mr. Webb's attempts to try to get things corrected for us. And the rest of you paying attention to what's going on. We just feel like we've really been deceived, and kind of that Russian army is coming after us, and we're in the trenches fighting for everything we've got. So thanks for your attention.
Thank you. Vicki Mason. Not here? Okay. Ben? I can't read it. Fit Friffs Fell? Not here? Okay. Jenny Pretty?
Hello, my name's Jerry Pretty, Gaston, Indiana.
Jerry, sorry.
My writing was not too clear. I I've got a question that's never been answered all the meetings I've been at. Just how did the ground get labeled ERA? Can anybody answer that?
Can you, Brad, you want to?
I'd be delighted to handle that. So the IC code allows for property that has, particularly in this case, there is a there is a cap on agricultural land. And as I understand from the legal opinions, and there are three of them that have advised me on this because I did ask this question before bringing the ERA to you, is this allowed in this instance? And I was told that because of the property value of farmland being capped and this being a new project that would increase the farm ground value, that this is allowed. I'm not an attorney. I don't recite the IC codes, but I know your previous attorney had looked at it, county council, or I'm sorry, the county commissioner's attorney had looked at it as well, so.
And is that is the value of that, is that based off of assessed value or?
Yeah, there's a legal opinion, and I forwarded that legal opinion to all of you yesterday afternoon.
Right, well, these people don't have the the legal opinion in front of them.
Do you want me to read the legal opinion?
No, you don't have to go through that whole thing if you don't want to.
Yeah, so I I just gave you the Reader's Digest version of it.
Yeah.
I have it here.
I have it as well.
Well, the the real answer to your question is Indiana statute. I asked that question back when we first considered this.
It is IC code, for those who are interested, refer to IC code 6-1.1-12.1-1. That allows for the ERA to be established in this area. There's precedence throughout the state of Indiana with ERAs being established for the purpose of tax abatements. This isn't the first of its kind. It is a requirement by by state law that ERAs be put in place in order to do a tax abatement in an area. So we watch, we follow that advice.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I guess I'm not real clear. So are we basing that on an economic value of the ground?
I I'll I need legal counsel to answer these questions. I I think I think you should refer to your 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 attorney and your counsel who reviewed those.
I couldn't hear the question.
My question is, was this ERA based on the economic value of the farm ground dollar wise, or is it based on? I thought ERA meant the ground was not good for anything. You know, it it needed revitalization.
Kyle, do you want to address, you want to address ERA?
I have a legal definition here if anyone wants to hear it.
What's that?
If you like, I have the legal definition for ERA.
I'll log here.
You can, if you want. So I think we've got an opinion. I don't know where that opinion came from, I guess, the opinion that you sent over, was that?
From Meadow Forge.
Okay. That if you would, yeah. I mean, he has a question.
So I believe the memo that Brad forwarded you is a memo that that we submitted in response to a request by Bill Hughes, and that covered several topics, one of which was the whether the the council had legal authority to to rescind the prior approved abatement. In that memo, it also included some commentary on how this council appropriately, by Indiana Code, established the Meadow Forge leased land as an economic revitalization area. Certainly, Indiana Code provides a a definition of economic revitalization area. It's one we've heard at prior council meetings. Jason Kouchmay and others have have leaned on their argument that it that is it is undesirable or due to a cessation of growth or other sort of snippets within that definition. That is the definite, the the legally defined definition of economic revitalization area. As counties throughout the state have interpreted that code, there's factors that go into whether certain land fits that definition. To answer your question, sir, which I I believe is, are you are you viewing the value of the land versus the value of what comes from the land? Perhaps corn, soybeans, other other crops? I think you're making making that distinction. In part, it is the the former. It's the value of the land as agricultural land from an assessment perspective is capped at the agricultural assessment rate set by the state on annual basis. This year was $1,500 per acre. Last year it was $1,290 per acre. Year before is $1,280 acres per, $80 per acre. The state recently has passed legislation that allows for non-agricultural land, particularly land within a solar development, to be assessed at a significant multiple of that, eight, nine, 10 times that. I believe the northern rate is is close to 13,000 an acre. So when we're comparing value of land from an assessment perspective, we're comparing the value of land of agricultural land, 1,500 an acre this year, to 13,000 an acre. That that's one example of the decisions that county councils make as to whether this land can be of greater value. One one other element of of that is the tax rate cap. You've heard, I've I've presented on this to the council in previous meetings. My Baker Tilly colleagues have presented on this, how farmland what is is taxed based on a tax cap at 2%. So we talked about the assessment. The land is assessed at $1,500 an acre. It is then taxed at 2% an acre. It is then taxed at two percent an acre, excuse me, two percent per dollar, regardless of whether the applicable tax rate in that taxing district might be two point one or two point five, some higher value. Well, when the land is reclassified as utility solar land, land that's included in a solar project or land, land that's included in a, in a Meyer or Kroger or some other commercial development, that two percent tax cap goes up to three, three percent. So, if your tax rate in X township within this community is anywhere higher than two percent, and it's used as commercial industrial utility, it would be capped at that three percent. And so, the term used earlier by Jason is that those circuit breaker losses, there aren't circuit breaker losses that hurt the county budget and the, and the money's available to the county because the county can receive additional tax dollars from those taxpayers that are using it for industrial or solar or some other commercial use. Those are two elements of value of the land that is created by this council designating the land as an economic revitalization area.
May I ask, certainly you have point of clarification on that ERA?
Sure.
So, on the, you just gave that definition. I noticed that it said if the ownership transfers, the designation transfers with the property. I know these are leases, I think thirty, thirty-five year lease. Because it's a lease, when Meadow Forge goes on down the road and it transfers back to the property, will that EA, ERA designation transfer back to the owners of the property? Or is, will it not because it's a lease?
That's a great, great question, Ryan. There's, there's a couple ans, there's, there's one answer to that in that it, the economic revitalization area designation, that ERA term applies to the land. So, it applies to the land that is, that continues to be owned by the landlord, the, the, the ground leasers to Meadow Forge or any other land within the economic revitalization. So, even though Meadow Forge is constructing the solar project, that designation stays with the land. But what it, what it does allow is that when there are improvements, whether that might be a operations and maintenance building, a, a typical structure, or solar panels with their metal pilings into the ground, it'll, the ERA designation allows for the council to provide for tax abatement to those items.
So, if that's, that farmer in thirty-five years goes to farm that land back, will that ER designation get in the way of him operating that as a farm? Since it's considered impossible, undesirable land?
No, it would not get in the way of the future uses of that land, nor would it get in the way of the land that's within that area, but not part, not ultimately part of the Meadow Forge project. So, I think. Is it twenty-five hundred acres or something?
Nine hundred acres within the fence, about two thousand five hundred like acres.
So, that ERA area, that map that's attached to this council's preliminary resolution and the confirmatory resolution includes a little over two thousand acres. We talked about this at the last meeting. The project, these solar pilings and the panels, might only cover nine hundred acres. So, to the extent that perhaps one lease is terminated because Meadow Forge doesn't need it, even though it falls within that economic revitalization area, those landowners continue to, may continue to farm. Of course, there's setback issues and other things, but from an economic perspective, they can continue to use that land. Sometimes, economic revitalization areas expire. They expire after twenty years, thirty-five years. Some expire at the end of an abatement period so that that land is no longer designated as an ERA, mainly in part so that if a future developer wants to come and use that land, they would need to return to this council and ask you to designate that land as an ERA again. So, their development might be able to receive abatement. And so, I, forgive me, I don't have the project SB one in front of it, in front of me, but I believe on the second page of the SB one, it walks through when this ERA expires. So, there would be no designation past that date. My guess is it's about ten years after construction, just because that's the length of the currently approved abatement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You got a minute fifty-six.
That's kind of a complicated answer, but, so is this, is it of my opinion then? When this all got presented to the council, the council deemed the land as ERA? Is that where it started?
Well, that's, that's, that's not where the project started. The project was already in, in place and, and all of the rules of the project. All we were, all we were doing was the ERA and the, we haven't approved the project. We've approved the ERA and the tax abatement at this point.
So, the ER, the ERA came after these people started the project?
No, the project hasn't been started.
But hadn't been started, but the talk of it being started. What, what triggered the ERA?
Well, the request was made from Economic Development to the council to, to approve that, to approve or, or.
Yeah, the, the company files for tax abatement, and as part of the tax abatement application, it requires to be designated as an ERA area. So, the filing by the company and submitting of a tax abatement application to the county, which I brought before you, triggers the ERA designation for your review.
Can I say something? I'm gonna give you a little bit of my experience here. I, I, I believe in solar energy. It's a source of energy.
I do too, in a proper way.
And yet, as a county commissioner, I sat across the hall in that room and was assured that at the intersection of three thirty-two and four hundred Nemo Road, on the northwest corner, we approved, and I asked the question, I'll never forget it. If we approve this sports complex, will it always be approved as a sports complex? You all know what that intersection is today. Because I was trying to be a good citizen. I did have one role though, and I'll throw this in for good taste. I wrote the ordinance on the billboard sign ordinances out there so you didn't have billboards every two hundred feet.
Well.
Things change in life.
Yes, they do.
For what we're doing.
And, and I offer solar too. We need solar. But there's plenty of areas where they can go. Plenty of areas. And we have valuable farm ground out there. I, like I said earlier, I've been out there for thirty years. We have very valuable farm ground out there. And so, I just don't know, I'm totally not. The answer's kind of complicated for me. I don't totally understand it, but it just doesn't seem worth deeming that ERA.
I asked that very question. No, they said, Mr. Hughes gave us an answer. And I agree with you. It's, it's the statute. We go by statute here. That's our, our, our big brother's the state.
Well, I understand that too. But is it not my understanding also, if we have ordinances in place to protect Delaware County, that the state cannot override them?
Well, if they conflict with the state statute. The state could. But I had a prosecutor one time remind me that, that ordinances and such are rules, not laws. Laws carry fines. And so, we change the rules as human beings all the time.
Yeah.
As I said, four hundred west is a perfect example.
Yeah, and, and I agree that sometimes that has to be done. But we need to get some stuff in place to protect everybody. And I, you know, I appreciate the moratorium, I really do. And I hope that the committee can come up with some really great answers to benefit everybody because it's needed.
There's been a lot of things that have been brought up, not just in public meetings, but discussions that we've also had that, that I think will have positive impact moving forward, or I hope it will.
Well, I hope so too.
Yeah.
I mentioned in my earlier comment to the council this morning that I've already got a drainage problem. And I've addressed one of the big farmers out there who's involved in this. Hey, what can we do about it? He tells me, go to the county. There's a ditch behind my house that stays full ninety-five percent of the time. It takes not much rain at all for that ditch to fill up. And I've chased the ditch down, and I can see where a lot of the problems are. But the only response I've ever got, and he says the same thing, we have no money. So, how's that change? If they were to come in, it's gonna make it worse. So, what's the response gonna be then?
Well, there's, uh, there's, the responsibility becomes, in, in the way that it's written now, and that could change because we put together the group and I, and I think.
It falls on them, but we all know, how are we going to enforce that?
Well, I think we would, uh, we would be holding them accountable for, for those issues, and I think.
We can sit here and talk about that.
Service, yeah.
When they come in to put them in, who's gonna police, oh, we drove this pile right here and we hit a tile. None of us is there.
Well, hopefully that will be discussed in the ongoing year with this, with this committee. And if, if further restrictions in the, in the ordinance need to be placed in there, hopefully the, the, that, that discussion will happen. I think that's a topic that, that is certainly up for discussion. I need to get onto another speaker.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for listening. Appreciate it.
RC Bunch, is that correct? Okay. Is that, all right. Okay, all right. Tom Schroder? Schroder, sorry, is that Schroder? Schroder, sorry.
No, no worries. It's a tough one. I just, uh, yeah, I already mentioned our open house tonight. I, I, I did just want to say, I think it's, um, it's unfortunate that, um, I think the, the initial Baker Tilly presentations and where we are now, that there's been a, a misunderstanding. I think we're, we're talking about a, a, one slide on this deck, I think, that was, that was presented back in September, looking at the, the property taxes paid by Meadow Forge. I think the, the main goal of that slide was to say, when Meadow Forge is paying thirty-two million dollars in property taxes over the, the course of its lifetime, how is that money gonna be allocated in the county? It was just trying to show that extra level of granularity. Where is that money being put in Delaware County? The sixteen point six million dollars is being allocated towards the Westell schools. So, I, I did just want to support Baker Tilly in that, that, I think that slide was just trying to show the clarification of where does this thirty-two million dollars go within Delaware County?
That is a semi-accurate statement. Because, now, hold on, hold on. It's, it's a wash. You're taking away sixteen, or whatever the, the figure was, and then you're pumping whatever that figure is again. So, it's, it, it basically be, you're taking five, five million out, and you're putting five million back in. It's not, I mean, that's, that's basically covering what was taken out. That's what I'm saying to you. Like, that's where this is, that, that's where this has gotten us all sorts of sideways up here, completely. And that's why I'm infuriated about it, to be honest with you. So, that's, that's a semi-accurate statement. They are not getting sixteen million dollars in, in revenue. It's basically replacing sixteen million that disappears or is gone. I mean.
All right.
Fine, I, I really appreciate that thought. And you are right that as Meadow Forge pays additional tax dollars, the other tax dollars of the other landowners in this county decrease. But both Meadow Forge and Baker Tilly told you that at two meetings in front of this board.
Yes, but you're running ads on Facebook, sponsored ads. Claiming that it's sixteen point five million to the school.
Yeah, yeah. No, no, please.
Well, what I'm saying is, presenting it to us is, is one thing, but to, to run a sponsored ad on social media sites, giving the impression to everyone who scrolls across it that there's sixteen point five million dollars going into the school district seems a little misleading at best. And I think that's where, while, I know that's where a lot of the frustration comes from. It's kind of, you really gotta peel back the layers to get to the details of what's going on, and you can't really take everything at face value, and that's where it becomes frustrating.
I almost feel like something like that should have just been stated completely out there and red flags all over it. I don't know, crossing guards, something that draws, draws attention to it. You know what I mean? Like, I don't, I don't understand, I don't understand how we've gotten to this point because that's something that is important. And obviously, the public would have picked up on it, and they did. So, I mean. So, it, to, to me, it's just, it, it's confusing. The way I explained it, obviously, some people probably didn't understand it. I understand it because I explained it to myself. But, you know what I mean? I mean, you can't, you can't say, you can't say that it, they're getting sixteen million if, if it's just replacing, they're getting. I keep going back to the wash. I keep going back to that. If you, if, if it would have been talked to me, if it would have been presented to me and stated that, you know, Westell Schools is getting this, this amount, but it's going to be a wash, then in essence, in my head, as a business, but being part of businesses, business owner and whatever else, I'm not making any money. That's my thought. So, I, I mean, in essence, I mean, you guys can say whatever you want, but that, that's not. They're, they're getting money to replace money that's gone because of a loss of tax revenue, correct?
It's not, it's not a loss of tax revenue, but.
Well, right. But then, now, hold on, guys. Now, then the other thing is, is.
A lower tax bill.
What's that?
It's a lower tax bill for the other.
Okay, I mean, that's, that's just what I, I wanted to get that out there. I just, for me, that's the frustrating thing about it for me with all this is. Now, hold on. I, I agree. You had, you had your chance, man. I get it. I get it. Trust me. I think we've got plenty of people up here asking pretty hard questions, you know what I mean?
Hey, we've, we've got to get back to the public comment on this. I mean, I think we've covered this, and we will continue to discuss this beyond this meeting.
May we finish our two minutes?
Yes.
What's that?
They still have time.
Can we have our opportunity?
Yeah.
We, we were just responding to questions, so just wanted to give him an opportunity to speak.
I'll, I'll keep it brief. This is just something that we're gonna be touching on tonight too, but these concerns about drainage as well. I, 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 I hear, I hear folks, but I think something that I want to make clear with the project is that we're gonna be planting according to the solar ordinance that's already been approved. We have to plant a vegetative cover that, that follows Purdue's pollinator scorecard throughout this site. So, these are native vegetation that is gonna have root structures that are deeper than traditional agriculture, actually absorbing more water than what is currently being absorbed by traditional crops. And those will be in the ground year round, not just part of the year. So, I, I do just want to reiterate that there is a drainage benefit with the ground cover that we're gonna be planting for the project. And it's our responsibility to maintain the drainage of the project. We, you know, we can't have a project that has failed drainage. It, we have to maintain it for the project to operate continuously. So, that's on us. We have to do that in order to have a successful project. And we're, we're committing to that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kyle, now, we gotta stick with the schedule here. We've got people that have signed up and, and waited for hours to, to speak. So, Kyle?
That's me.
Okay, all right.
Keep it brief. We submitted a memo to, to, to Bill Hughes and, and his colleagues. Would encourage you to, to read that if, if you haven't. That outlines our, our position on, on the matter. Understand that, uh, these are complex issues, to your point, that can be distilled down as much as possible. We tried to do that during our multiple presentations to you. Baker Tilly has tried to do that. Believe that. You've also had tax abatement committees to try to distill and, and sort through that information. Sounds like there are additional questions on the economics of the deal that I'm sure we can, we can work through. Our, our position, as outlined in the, in the memo, is, is that the council does not have authority to rescind the abatement. If, in the event that they, that, that the council chooses to, of course, we would have the, you know, legal remedies. We would have to explore legal remedies, just as many of you. Just as many of you noted, you'd have to explore your legal remedies relative to this. So appreciate the continued discussion. Hopefully, people attend tonight's, uh, open house and, and continue those, those conversations. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tammy Landis?
I taught school, Tammy Landis, 16671 North County Road 600 West, the person in the belly of the solar project. I taught school for 33 years. Every morning before school started, the principal came on the intercom and told the kids to do what's right. It may not be popular. It may not be economical. You do what's right. Invenergy has not done what is right. They went behind our backs and set this all up. Tom even helped Marty write the solar ordinance. To me, I'm just a simple person, but to me, that's a conflict of interest when he knows he's gonna put an application in for a solar. We didn't get informed. We didn't know anything till right before Christmas. What a wonderful Christmas present to know I'm gonna have 106 acres of solar panels around my house, reaching 18 feet high. I just, I just want to be protected, and I'm not being protected. We're more worried about economics and, and, oh, the, the, oh, we're planting trees, we're planting trees. That's not gonna help with the drainage. If you saw my place right now, you'd understand. I had a specialist come out and look at my farm. I explained to him what they were gonna be doing with solar panels around my house. Told my husband and I, we will not be able to farm our land because it's gonna be a swamp, because we will get all that drainage, because the hill, they're on a hill and we're down in the valley part, so it's all gonna come down to us. Also, I was trespassed, my property was trespassed on by Invenergy's company twice. I went out the first time and asked them, they were trying to drill things in my ground, and I said, I'm not part of the solar. I said, please don't get on my property again. So when they left, I guess they thought it'd be a fun thing. They took a great big four-wheeler and went down my farm and left ruts about this deep. And they're still there. I con, I sent an email to Tom, never responded to me. Finally, I talked to him at a meeting and I, he said, well, I never got the email. And I said, I can show you a picture of it. I got it on my phone. I took a picture of my email. And he said, oh, he goes, well, we'll get that fixed. We'll get that fixed. I said, well, I'd like to have it done by March 1st because we need to start farming this year. So now he tells me this morning that, well, it's so, they had a landscaper out there and it's so muddy that they don't know when they're gonna be able to fix the ruts. This is what we're dealing with. They can't be upfront to us. They have to sneak around and do things. Just meet me face to face and tell me the truth. If I send you an email, respond to it. If I call you, respond to it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is it Eric Landis?
It is.
Okay.
Eric Landis, 16671 North County Road 600 West, Gaston, Indiana. There's a lot of ways to get around everything that we've been in so far. I think we need to take care of each other. I mean, we've got to. This, this committee that you're looking to save yourselves from, from legal prospects, it hadn't been established yet. Nobody knows who's on it, who's gonna participate. So why can't we table this until another time? There I'm giving you an opening to do something about this without doing anything. So if the other committees are willing to take that first step, why can't we let them do that? That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Susan Dillon?
She stepped out.
She stepped out. Christopher Bilbrey?
Thank you very much, Christopher Bilbrey. I want to thank you guys for taking the steps that you guys have taken today. As I said to the commissioners, uh, I think that the commissioners did an amazing thing. I think you guys are, are taking some really good steps to let the public feel like they are being heard. I mean, you guys have really today made some pretty hard statements, hard line statements that I feel like really truthfully make people feel like you're standing up for them. I thank you all for that, each and every one of you. Uh, Counselor Ballard agrees with himself, and I agree with his self too. Uh, so I mean, it, it makes perfect sense to me. Not just social media, there were property owners that received letters in their mailbox through the United States Post with the same information on them. So it wasn't just, oh, social media, that's a crazy thing that, you know, nobody uses and it's a passing fad. They also received letters in the mail with that same information. And so, you know, it does seem, you know, I, I don't know what the reasoning behind that, that is, but, you know, there's an old saying that, um, you know, perception is, tends to be reality, especially when you're dealing with political aspects and things like that. So that has to be, you know, accounted for. A couple of the other things I wanted to mention real quick was, I, you know, I do kind of hate to hear you guys say, a couple of you mentioned that you didn't want to rush into sending this back to the abatement committee. You know, I'm, I'm glad we've decided now to stop rushing into things. Uh, it feels like this, we're where we're at because we rushed into things. So, you know, I, I feel like it's, it is good that we have a year for the, uh, moratorium, and we do have some time, but it almost seems like it would be good when you guys come back to, to pull that off the table, to go ahead and take us back to zero. Let us start all over. Let the, which is what I believe that the, uh, intent behind the commissioners was, was to start over. I mean, they had some pretty hard line statements as well. They wanted to make that committee of elected officials, of citizens, pro and, and for, pro and against. And so I think that the best thing to do here would be to zero this out and start all over in that year process. And then if any company comes forward, let them apply for an abatement at that point, not just hold this abatement, waiting around to see if something happens. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, whoever's next, I can't read. Looks like Ed.
Is there an Edward?
Edward? I read, I can't read the first or last name.
Like an Edward or?
Did anybody else sign up to speak that hasn't spoken yet? He's done? Okay. That's, that's the last one I've got on my list.
Have a gentleman in the back, President.
You're, you're gonna have to come on up to, so we can hear you. If you could, make it quick, because you've been up once. Thank you.
It's important. Can you guys make some kind of public statement, like in the paper or something, stating that the, that the school information and the, the information from, that these guys have presented is incorrect? And, you know, correct the, the public's perception of, of this whole project. That's a lot of what's tearing our community apart is the lies of these guys. And, and we've all.
We're not the county executive. We're the fiscal. We don't have that authority.
Well, you guys all talk to them more than we do. Maybe you can make that mention that, hey, you got.
Well, I think this, this is a public meeting and it's, it's out to the public, and I think that
Right.
that statement's been made. And I, and I think there are some, I mean, like I say, this goes back to the, the presentation, uh, was, was significantly different to county council than it was to the school board.
Right. And that's the majority of the grief that you guys have taken over the last couple of months is the lies that we've had to put up with. But I think that, that the people that don't come to these meetings and that are not aware, need to be made aware of that they were misled. And it probably would help this process alone. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's, I don't have anything else. We've already got our last one. As long as you're nice about it.
Oh, I'll be nice. I'm gonna make it a statement, I'm gonna make it a question. What's the point of ERA if it's not properly used? What's the point of ERA if it's not used the right way, the way it's supposed to be? That's.
Well, I think that, I mean, the answer, the answer was given earlier. You may not agree with it, and you don't have to agree with it, but the answer was, that was given earlier, and that's what we, uh, went back, when you go back to that, uh, September meeting, I think that's what the council decided back then, uh, based on the information we had at the time.
Need a motion?
I would entertain.
I do have one thing.
Okay.
One thing. So I, I would be remiss if I, we didn't acknowledge that it is emerg, Emergency Management Appreciation Week. So you may have seen the posts on Facebook, and we've had members of our EMA department come up and speak today during some of our financial process. So if you don't follow them on Facebook, check them out. They do a lot for our community. They're an important asset, and this is their celebration of all they do this week from the 20th through the 26th. So there's my shout out to our EMA.
All right. No move?
Do we have anything on, usually we ask for any other comments as, as far as online, I assume there's nothing.
Do we have anything online or?
Uh, I mean, there's, there's some discussion, but I think any questions have been answered. We did not, uh, receive any emails during the meeting. Uh, the one, I, I guess there is one statement, um, asking, let me make sure it's the only one. Come, I, I had made the comment earlier that I didn't want to rush into, uh, doing anything with the, um, with Ryan's motion at the time, Mr. Webb's motion at the time. Just, I guess to make it clear, our abatement process, there was nothing about this that was rushed compared to any other abatement. I mean, I think you've only had a few that you've had the opportunity to participate in since being on council, but for the rest of us, there was nothing rushed with that process. It may feel that way because of just of when, how everything happened with the project and, and communications by, you know, not getting out to folks until December, um, people finding out. So it may have felt that way, but at, for the council itself, we follow the same process and procedure that we have for any other abatement we've ever passed for many businesses in the community who, some are existing, and we've done abatements for equipment, and others are, you know, maybe new organizations. And that's something I bring up every time Mr. Bookout speaks to us. Just because we pass a tax abatement does not mean the project will happen. We actually had a project a couple of years ago that was supposed to happen, and I believe in the Daleville area, we passed an abatement and they never came, so it never came to fruition. So we followed the process as it's designed, so while it may have appeared to be rushed, there was nothing, I mean, I, I would.
No timelines in, in both projects were accelerated or, or moved forward in any way from the normal, from the normal approvals.
Correct. Yes.
That, that was only like, the really, only question was about rushing the abatement, which we followed procedure for that.
Clarified that in the future, we would have the public hearing separate from the regular meeting.
Yeah, separate.
Took kind of from that experience.
Yeah. No, I think that's definitely something. And, and there have been lots of things that, that have brought up that were put into the, the planning commission, uh, ordinance, the notifications, um, you know, lots of different things. And I think that'll continue. I mean, I really think they're gonna spend, the commissioners and, and this committee are gonna spend time to try and get it right. And I think that's something that, uh, I know the attorney that represents the other side of this had, had cautioned us, let's, let's pause and, and let's do everything we can do to, to get it right. And we won't make everybody happy. Um, you never will, but, um, but I think the input has been good. And, and we're gonna continue down, down that road, so.
Yeah, I used to read the classifieds in the local newspaper before I read any of the rest of the newspaper, but I don't know when I've read a classified ad.
All right.
Don't have a little.
On that, I'll second Ryan.
Okay, we got a motion from Ballard, second from Piper to adjourn. Any questions from council? Roll call, please.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?